You just sent me a text.
She did to me, too.
Oh, thank you.
I don't want this one, I want this one.
Hello. Who's that? That there.
I'll try it for a minute.
I'll put it on my phone.
Okay, Mayor, we are ready.
All righty, okay, thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank everyone that's with us this evening. At this point, I'd like to open up the agenda, the Ballard Park City Council Special Virtue Meeting. Today is August the 5th, 2020, and the time is 5:04. So at this point, I believe that our Deputy City Clerk, Ms. Morales, is present. She could take... Ms. Morales, are you present?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor Lozano.
Present.
I'm sorry, let me, let me go first with the council members. Councilmember Avila. Chair. Councilmember Ayala.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Chair.
Mayor Protem Hernandez.
Present.
And Mayor Lozano.
Okay, present. Thank you very much. So I'm here with our councilmember Gina Ayala. Her computer's down, so trying to keep our distance here. All right. So, public communication, Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any, any one input from the community?
I do. So the deadline to submit input for the 5 o'clock meeting is 3 o'clock. We did submit, I'm sorry, we did receive a few after the deadline, and I will forward that to all the council members. So I will start with Ms. Beatriz. And let me go ahead and place that call now.
Welcome to Verizon Wireless.
Oops, sorry. Let me try that one more time.
Si, Ms. Beatriz, este es Lourdes.
Hello?
Si, buenas tardes, Ms. Beatriz, es Lourdes. Le estamos dando tres minutos para hablar. Puede hablar ahora.
All right, thank you, gracias.
Thank you for the members of Ballard Park and other staff of the city of Ballard Park. I'm talking about behalf of the project Home Key as a resident and also as in behalf of everyone in United Way. I would like to encourage you to approve that this project, the home key. It's very kind to have this, in this moment, have this particular project in our city. We have a lot of needs because COVID-19, but also we are before COVID-19, we have done that needs in our community. I am being in support of the many household people in our community. And we are trying to look for one place to live. And we are, we don't have enough assets, not because we don't have enough time, enough, it's because we don't have enough resources. So a project, a project Home Key can help many of the residents, on households resident, especially the president over 65 years old, who recently, the, recently the count, homeless count in January, showed them more than 23% of the new household people was seniors. So that project can be amazing, amazing. I think so this is more, this is one compassionate, good visionary decision to take a home key project here in Ballard Park. Also, we personally, as everyone in, and as president, I talked to personally, we, Governor Kevin Newsom, about to bring more housing to our communities. You were in the meeting, we, we explained that that needs. So I encourage you to approve that decision, the acquisition of the Motel 6 in Ballard Park. And I, I want to say I can bring more support from our community. I know they have been in, in many meetings, we asked, and they expressed their concern, but also that we need to help these household individuals who are in Ballard Park Street, but also in Ellic County. We have more than 5,000 individuals in, I'm sorry, yes, 5,000 individuals in San Gabriel Valley, but we have 500, more than 500 individuals in Ballard Park.
Thank you, the time, the time is... The time is up.
Beatriz, I'm sorry, the, the, I'm sorry, Ms. Beatriz, the time is up. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. So we have another call. Thank you, thank you very much, Beatriz, appreciate that.
Yes, the next call is from Scott Chamberlain. And let me call him now.
Okay, oh, go ahead.
Hello, this is Scott.
How are you? This is Manuel Lozano, Mayor Ballard Park. We're calling you, and you're now live for public communication.
Great, well, thank you very much. I'm Scott Chamberlain, Executive Director of the San Gabriel Consortium on Homelessness. And we exist to be able to educate and to support and collaborate agencies together. And we have 3,000 stakeholders, and every month we gather about 100 people to be able to resolve homelessness and to discuss. And I just want to thank you as leaders in the city of Ballard Park for your support of Project Room Key. And I know there's no action tonight, but I just wanted to thank you so much for all of your support. And as we're creating this pipeline of bridge housing and permanent supportive housing, the acquisition of the Motel 6 would be a great step in the right direction. And we have seen so many amazing testimonies of people getting into housing, getting their life back together in stable situations, and, and keeping them off the streets so that COVID not only is good for that resident, that neighbor, but also good for our cities. And so, thank you so much. The consortium is here to be able to support you and to be able to educate and connect with residents in your, in Ballard Park to help to resolve and prevent homelessness. And so, thank you, leaders of Ballard Park, for your courageous support of this project and helping into the future. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Very much, Mr. Chamberlain, thank you very much. All right, Madam Deputy City Clerk, we have an additional call.
We do, we have Richard Hopkins.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Hopkins?
Yes. Oh, no, not yet, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Hello, Richard Hopkins.
Hey, Mr. Hopkins, this is Manuel Lozano, Mayor Ballard Park. We're calling you. You have your three minutes? You wanted to share something in public communication?
I did send a comment, but if you'd like, I will speak.
Absolutely, thank you.
I am President of the East San Gabriel Valley Coalition for the Homeless, based in Hacienda Heights. And within the past four or five months, the Motel 6 was taken over by the state. It has 152 rooms. The occupancy currently is about 180 to 190 on a daily basis. They get three meals, they have security, three individuals, as well as three nurses at the facility, and it's done quite well. But we've not had any problems as far as the community goes. And would like to have the city endorse it, be able to assist the homeless within the San Gabriel Valley, but particularly in Ballard Park. I don't know if you're aware, but in January of 2020, the LASSA had the homeless count. And within the San Gabriel Valley, there are 4,555 homeless individuals. And I believe that the Project Room Key would be a valuable asset to the community in a variety of ways. And so, I would love to have the, the community to be able to endorse this and take additional people off the streets, providing them information as well as services so that how long the service period would be, would give them some confidence, and also eventually to have a placement within perhaps at Ballard Park, as well as within the San Gabriel Valley.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you for your input.
You're welcome.
But thank you very much. All right, Deputy City Clerk, do we have another?
Yes, we have one more by the name of Annie Miski.
Thank you.
Hello, Anne speaking.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Manuel Lozano, the Mayor of the City Ballard Park. We're calling you for input, and this is your opportunity.
Wonderful, okay, thank you very much. So my name is Anne Miski. I'm the CEO of Union Station Homeless Services, and on behalf of them, I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to speak about the Motel 6 conversion. We have been incredibly honored to be part of the lifesaving and transformational initiative that is Project Room Key, which seeks to keep vulnerable individuals safe from COVID by getting them indoors to hotels. As a result of our experience there, but also because of our almost 50 years' experience in permanently housing people experiencing homelessness, I would like to speak in favor of the purchase of the Motel 6 for conversion to permanent supportive housing. This is now part of Operation Home Key, which will seek to get 15,000 Angelinos off the streets. I also want to say a special thank you to the County of Los Angeles and Supervisor Hildegard Solis, who's been an incredible champion for this initiative and for ending homelessness across our region. You know, we all agree that we've seen a dramatic rise over the past few years of people experiencing homelessness, and we know that people are very fearful when they see those who are homeless on the street. But what most people don't realize is that when housed with dignity, and especially with the appropriate services, people's lives are transformed. You wouldn't know these people had at one time been homeless. What we've seen with Project Room Key is that many people who were hesitant about accepting services were glad to get into the hotel rooms. And since we've been sheltering them, many have gone on to permanent housing. So we know, however, that what stands in the way of ending homelessness is the lack of permanent housing. And that is what it takes to get people on the path to stability and wellness. So motel conversions are a wonderful way of providing this housing in a way that is much more cost-effective and faster than developing buildings from scratch. And it's also a wonderful and short-lived opportunity for communities to take advantage of the funding to purchase and convert these motels. I know that we at Union Station are looking at doing a number of these. So I ask that you please consider purchasing the Motel 6. In the many years I've been working in this field all across the country, I've seen the amazing transformation that supportive housing brings, but not just to those experiencing homelessness, but to the community as a whole. Permanent housing brings hope, and it creates a healthier and safer community. Again, not just for those experiencing homelessness, but for the entire community. Again, thank you very much, council, and I urge you to consider purchasing the Motel 6. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Madam Deputy City Clerk, any others?
Those were all that were received before the 3:00 PM deadline. I will forward all the other ones to the City Council for their review.
Thank you, thank you very much. All righty, so...
Um, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead. Yes.
Father Mike had sent us a message that he wasn't going to be able to be at the meeting, but he wanted his public comments read.
Absolutely.
Lulu, do you have that in front of you?
One second, let me pull it up.
Would you mind reading it, Lulu, please?
Yes, let me, let me just pull it up from, I'm sorry, from Father Mike?
Yes, from Father Mike. He texted to us, but I know he wanted it read at the meeting.
Was it sent to, to the public comment email?
If not, we can read it at 7 o'clock to make sure that we have it.
He said he read it, he sent it, yes. Oh, well, yes, we could do that. We could read it for the 7 o'clock meeting.
Right, so perhaps you could email it to Lulu, Councilmember Avila?
It's in the text, you have it in the text as well.
You could, you, somebody, as long as you could share it, that's all that matters.
I, I do have it if you wish for me to read it now, or if you...
Oh, perfect, just do it now.
Yes, please, Lulu, thank you.
Thank you. Dear members of the Ballard Park City Council, the mission of the St. John the Baptist is walk with people in light of God. To meet this moment, my parish sees that we must tackle the many challenges resulting from COVID-19 together. Specifically, I commend Governor Gavin Newsom and the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors leadership to purchase hotels and motels as part of Project Home Key to provide permanent supportive housing to people experiencing homelessness. Every single community was affected by the homelessness crisis prior to the COVID-19. And now, more than ever, that crisis has been exacerbated by the public health pandemic. People experiencing homelessness are members of our community. According to the 2020 homeless count, there were 5,082 people experiencing homelessness in the San Gabriel Valley. 555 of them identified in Ballard Park. That number is expected to increase with the economic turbulence. This means we, this means we must collectively support all efforts to secure rooms to house our most valuable neighbors. Compassion and collaboration countywide are the linchpin to bridging hope, bringing hope, I'm sorry. Additionally, we care deeply about continued efforts to flatten the curve of COVID-19. By allowing people to remain unsheltered, our neighbors will be at more, at more risk of contracting COVID-19 and hospitalizedized. Without the purchase of hotels or places for shelters in the San Gabriel Valley, people who are unsheltered will suffer, and we all will suffer. The COVID-19 crisis has made clear that our individual health is instructively linked to the health of our neighbors, sheltered or not. Ballard Park must do its part. To that end, I urge you as a representative of the city of Ballard Park to meet this moment and support all efforts to bring additional sheltering capacity through hotels and motels or other venues for shelter to prevent further spread of COVID-19. Ballard Park leaders need to step up and share space with the neediest. So 10,000 families of St. John Baptist Church and her community organizing arm, La Voice, LA Voice, supports the efforts of the Governor Newsom and the supervisor Solis. Please contact me if the parish can provide additional information. Sincerely, Father Michael D. Gutierrez, Pastor of St. John the Baptist of Ballard Park.
Thank you, Lulu, I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you very much for that input. All right. So at this point, we'll go ahead and end the public communication aspect of it. And I just want to say the agenda, just so everyone is aware, so we have the, we have the open session, which is a new affordable senior housing development proposal by the Retirement Housing Foundation, 14513-19 Central Avenue, by Director of the Community Development, Director of Services, Benjamin Martinez. We also have reasons to close session, which is a public employee, number two conference with legal negotiator. And we also have a three conference with legal counsel existing litigation, item four, real property negotiation pursuant to government code 54956.8. And we also have item five, which is again, the conference of legal counsel anticipated litigation. All right, so at this point, we're going to go with...
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Mayor, excuse, excuse me. So the LA County Supervisor's Office would like to give a presentation regarding the Project Home Key. This item came up after the posting of the agenda, and I understand it is urgent due to the application process for funding. So we would ask the council to motion and vote to add this item to the agenda.
All right, so this, I will move, I will move to go ahead and place the county representative on the agenda for discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Avila, any objections? She announced the move. So at this point, the representative, please introduce themselves, or whoever the person is.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, legal counsel.
Where are we going to put that on the agenda? What item is that now?
That's the item to discuss, the, the housing by LA County Representative from Hildegard Solis's office.
Okay, so we're going to just put that under presentations?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, so at this point, do we have the representative?
Yes, thank you, everyone. This is Judy Vasquez, Senior Advisor to Supervisor Hildegard Solis.
Thank you.
And on behalf of the supervisor, I want to thank the council for creating this space to discuss Project Home Key. The supervisor has always appreciated the support of the city of Ballard Park as the county works to address homelessness in the San Gabriel Valley and across the county. And Project Home Key is the latest in these efforts that the county is leading. So today, joining me, I have Kelly Quinn, Manager of the Master Planet Unit, Planet Planning Unit in the CEO's Asset Management Branch. And then I have Phil Ansell, who's the Director of our CEO Homeless Initiative. And I would like Phil to go ahead and give an overview of what Project Home Key is in the county's application. And then we're open to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. As you've heard from several of the public comments, Project Home Key is the next step in Governor Newsom's effort that began with Project Home Key to enable people experiencing homelessness who are particularly vulnerable to hospitalization or death if they contract COVID-19, to be safe. Specifically, the target population are, consists of individuals who are 65 years of age or older or who have a health condition which makes them particularly vulnerable, such as diabetes or heart disease. So as you know, the county has worked aggressively to implement Project Room Key. As part of the fiscal year 2021 state budget, the legislature and the governor agreed to allocate $550 million in federal coronavirus relief funds allocated to the state through the Federal Cares Act. These funds must be expended by December 30 of this year. And the $550 million allocated for Project Home Key is specifically to enable counties and cities to acquire properties to provide interim or, and/or ultimately permanent housing for people experiencing homelessness. The principal focus of Project Home Key is on the acquisition of hotels and motels, though other sorts of properties are also eligible for acquisition, such as board and care facilities and apartment buildings. And the primary focus is for the properties to ultimately be used as permanent housing. And within that specifically, they're not exclusively, but with a particular focus on permanent supportive housing, which is permanent housing for people experiencing homelessness, typically long-term homelessness with a disability who need intensive ongoing services and an ongoing rental subsidy. So the county, the initial application deadline for Project Home Key is August 13th. The county is working very diligently to submit as many applications as we can to purchase hotels and motels from willing owners of hotels and motels. Our plan then is, if the state approves our application, we then will need to actually acquire the hotels and motels by the end of December. We anticipate then that for an initial period of time, that will be likely between 18 and 24 months, though that is not set in stone, we would operate the hotels and motels as interim housing sites, as shelters, similar to the current Project Room Key sites, except that we would no longer have to be paying an occupant paying for the use of the hotel itself, because it would then, at that point, be owned by the county. And then we envision that we will undertake whatever level of rehabilitation or renovation is needed for the hotel or motel to convert it into permanent housing. And the most common form of renovation required will be the addition of kitchens or kitchenettes, which would then convert those hotel rooms or motel rooms into essentially single or studio apartments, each with their own bathroom, kitchen, and kitchen or kitchenette. And we, our best estimate would be that sometime around July of 2022, the sites could be used as permanent housing, where people who had been in the sites as interim housing may be able to stay or other eligible individuals experiencing homelessness would be bashed and provided the opportunity to become tenants, now tenants, in permanent housing in the hotel or motel. So I'm happy to, both Kelly Quinn and I are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yes, this is Manuel Lozano, the Mayor of Ballard Park. Out of curiosity, question I have. Will this be focused, I mean, definitely, I think the idea is great. Will this be focused primarily for Ballard Park, or is this open countywide? How does that operate?
Thank you, Mayor, excellent question. The, our homeless service delivery system is organized by service planning area, of which there are eight in Los Angeles County. The San Gabriel Valley, including the city of Ballard Park, is all part of a single service planning area, which is Service Planning Area 3. So that is the basic structure and of our system. And you heard earlier in public comment from Anne Miski, who's the Executive Director of Union Station Homeless Services, one of the largest homeless service providers in the San Gabriel Valley. So for permanent supportive housing, we draw from within the spa, though because the San Gabriel Valley is so large, it is divided into subregions. So we would anticipate that there would be a focus on people for permanent housing purposes, not exclusively from the city of Ballard Park, but from the subregion of the San Gabriel Valley, of which Ballard Park, in which the city of Ballard Park falls.
Let me ask you a question that, a question, just, City of West Covina rejected theirs yesterday, or sometime this week, they had a meeting, they had the opportunity, from my understanding, they rejected the consideration. So when we're talking subregion, so how many, how many cities are we talking about that it would incorporate? I mean, my focus, I'll be honest with you, though, I would prefer it be focused on residents of Ballard Park, since we do have a major issue, and it's kind of, I guess, from what I'm hearing from you, so it's... Well, let me just say, how, what is the, the service region that it covers?
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not, I don't, I can't tell you that. Those are developed by the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, and I don't have the specific breakdown. I may be able to secure that in the course of this discussion via email, but I would need to check on that. During the interim housing period, however, which would be the initial period for the utilization of the hotel or motel, there we would be focusing initially on the city of Ballard Park and then on the subregion. It's once the facility is converted to permanent supportive housing, then we have a rigorous prioritization approach based on providing permanent supportive housing to those individuals who are the most vulnerable and have the most acute needs. I would also say that if the, we were to purchase a site, and maybe Kelly Quinn could speak to this, but if we were to purchase a site in Ballard Park that's currently used, that's currently functioning as a Project Room Key site, then the site is already basically full, and people would be allowed to remain there until they were able to exit to permanent housing, at which point then another person would move behind them on an interim basis.
Sure, Phil, so let me also add that if your question is, are we applying for other hotels and... Sure, Phil. So let me also add that if your question is, are we applying for other hotels and other areas? We definitely are. This would not be our only application. We are looking at, you know, upwards of maybe even 20 applications at this point, all across the county. Not focused on the city of LA, but in areas that are outside of the city, including unincorporated areas of Los Angeles County.
Yeah.
Yep.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember.
So the motel six that we have here in Baldwin Park, I know we already have homeless families living there. So let's say we turn that into a project home key. What, what happens to the homeless families that are already there?
Do you want me to answer that, Phil?
Um, sure.
So my understanding is if the families are at risk of being homeless, if they were to be moved out, they would be allowed to stay. They would be, they are part of the target population, so they'd be allowed to stay.
And when you go through the renovations, because eventually you have to renovate, what happens to them then?
Sure. So we would look for vacancies, kind of naturally occurring vacancies, as people move on to other housing types and then renovate over time. I don't think we anticipate clearing out a building necessarily and doing it all at once. I think we have to look at that case by case.
And who manages these facilities? How are they taken care of to make sure they're up to code, that they're being kept clean? Who's gonna, who's going to monitor all of that?
So we will have a homeless service provider that will be responsible for managing the site while it's interim housing. And then following the rehab, when it becomes permanent supportive housing or potentially some number of units of other permanent housing for people experiencing homelessness, then we will have a both have a service provider for the permanent housing, which will include responsibility for managing the physical site. And this is the common approach that we have for the many thousands of units and hundreds of permanent supportive housing sites, in effect, around the county already.
Okay, another comment I have. With the results of the homeless counts this year, homelessness is up 12%, and that's pre-COVID. Does the county have a plan to mitigate the homelessness already with the 12% increase prior to the COVID-19?
Well, the county has an extremely robust plan to prevent and combat homelessness. Five years ago this month, the Board of Supervisors accepted a countywide leadership role in combating homelessness through the launch of the Homeless Initiative. And several months later, the board approved a comprehensive set of strategies to combat homelessness. And then Los Angeles County voters approved Measure H, a quarter cent special sales tax dedicated to preventing and combating homelessness over over for a 10-year period. So we have a very robust plan. And it's a plan that is resourced more robustly, much more robustly than efforts, than efforts in Los Angeles County in the past to combat homelessness. And in fact, the number of people exiting homelessness into permanent housing through the countywide homeless service delivery system, funded primarily through Measure H, has doubled since the Homeless Initiative began in 2015. However, as you noted, the homeless population increased from the 2019, from the 2018 homeless count to 2019, again, from 2019 to 2020. That's not because of limitations, because of, primarily because of the efforts to help families and individuals exit homelessness. It's because so many people are becoming homeless in Los Angeles County, that that inflow, or the number of people who are newly homeless is outpacing the number of people who can exit homelessness into permanent housing. So even though the exits from homelessness are up, the inflow into homelessness is up even more. The homeless service delivery system can somewhat influence, but only modestly influence, influence homelessness. The key drivers of homelessness, excessive rent increases, unjust evictions, and shortage of affordable housing, these are forces that are beyond the homeless service delivery system and largely beyond the control of the county. The Board of Supervisors only has, absent the pandemic, during which the board has certain special authority, but in routine times, absent the pandemic, the county can only, for example, control rent increases in, for occupied units in the unincorporated areas of the county. The ability to establish rent stabilization is within the authority of each of the individual 88 cities. There have been steps, both locally and at the state level, to try to address some of these issues. But the core dynamic of too many people with not enough income to pay high in escrow rents remains as the core cause of the countywide homelessness crisis. And of course, with the COVID-19 pandemic, we face a risk of a tidal wave of evictions, which could in turn dramatically increase the number of people who are newly homeless in Los Angeles County. Our board is acutely aware of this, has taken action within its jurisdiction, within its authority, to try to prevent that from happening to the maximum extent possible. But ultimately, additional action will be required, be required at the state and federal level to avoid that potential tsunami of evictions.
Thank you. And I know you said you purchased the motel six. Are you looking into purchasing other facilities? There's different motels or, or at least within our area? Have you looked at that or only the motel six?
Yeah, this is Kelly. I don't believe we've had another Baldwin Park property on the shortlist since we've been, you know, working on this feverishly for the last three weeks or so.
So do you plan on looking into other properties here in Baldwin Park?
Not at this point. We're kind of running out of time. We actually are going to start so many applications today. We need to keep doing that through the next, the next several days so that we meet the deadline.
I know Mayor Lozano mentioned, you know, ultimately, we would prefer to house the Baldwin Park residents, and of course, that would be my goal also. But I know that when people are looking to get into housing, there's a waiting list and that they get into it. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you do go by that waiting list to get them into this permanent housing, housing, once you develop the permanent housing. That's the same way you're going to be doing this, the, the, I know we're getting COVID patients in there or people at risk. But are you looking at a waiting list once it does become the permanent thing in order to get them there from this area, from the SPA Area Three?
So the, the waiting list you're referencing is for mainstream affordable housing, particularly for people on our waiting list to receive a Section Eight Housing Choice voucher. Permanent supportive housing, which is what we intend, is somewhat different in that we match people to permanent supportive housing based on their acuity. And the standard, we actually use an assessment tool that's intended to measure people's likelihood of dying on the street if they're not housed. And that's their risk of dying on the street, independent of COVID. So that is the process that we would look to use. I, I do want to say, I have reached out to see if I could get a, find out the exact, the cities that are in the Baldwin Park subregion. And I have not yet, I don't believe, received a response on that. But I did want to, oh, here we go. I have their response. The subregion is prized of, the other cities in your region, subregion, I'm being informed, are El Monte, South El Monte, West Covina, Irwindale, Covina, and Duarte. And then what I wanted to share additionally is that though there are no other Project Room Key sites, beg your pardon, there are no other hotels or motels in Baldwin Park for which we are intending to seek Project Home Key funding to acquire them. There are quite a number of other sites in the San Gabriel Valley. And therefore, there would be multiple, as there have been for Project Room Key. And because there will be those multiple sites, some of which are in your subregion, that will sort of support people in and in the immediate vicinity of Baldwin Park having the opportunity to be housed at the motel six.
Okay. And I know you mentioned, or maybe you already said this, you said that you will be looking at people that are homeless people that are at risk of dying on the streets. Now, are we looking at people that are in the hospitals only? Or are we really looking into the streets? Because there may be some people that may be living under the bridge that are not seeking medical help and maybe at risk of dying. How are you exactly looking for these homeless to, to put them in this hotel, in this room key project? If, let's say, they're not being checked into a hospital because they don't have a way to get there? Are you going under the wash? I know Lhasa does a lot of visits and visits to the homeless. I've gone out with them. So how exactly are you getting these people? And I know it's going to be from those cities that you mentioned. Is it just from the hospitals or how are you doing it?
No, it, it, it's not focused on people in hospitals by any means. We have an assessment tool that asks people about a range of questions. And then based on that, they're assigned an acuity score. And it's people above a certain level that are eligible for permanent supportive housing. And then within that, we basically sort in order of the most acute person. So it, it's, it is, this is the countywide system for matching people experiencing homelessness to permanent supportive housing. And it is not at all focused on people in hospitals. Someone could be in a hospital at the point that they're matched, but that would be, that's very much the exception. So yes, this involves going under the bridges and engaging our outreach teams, engaging with people who are living outside, as well as people who might already be in some form of shelter. And then, again, matching the people who are the, have the most acute needs to the scarce permanent supportive housing resource. And I'd like to just say more generally that Project Room Key has really been a watershed, I believe, in terms of homeless services in the San Gabriel Valley, where there has been very much of a shortage of interim housing and permanent supportive housing in the San Gabriel Valley, particularly in the central part of the San Gabriel Valley. There has, has been a history of housing and services in Pasadena on the west and Pomona on the east. But everything in between, there's been very little. And we've been able to stand up quite a large number of Project Room Key sites in the San Gabriel Valley. In fact, the number of room key beds we have in the San Gabriel Valley represents the highest percentage of the homeless population in SPA Three, higher than in any of the other seven service planning areas. And I think this has really had a positive impact in terms of homelessness in the San Gabriel Valley. Obviously, it hasn't solved the problem. It's only a modest percentage overall, despite being a higher percentage than the other spas. But I'm really optimistic that we'll be able to build on this experience with Project Home Key. And as I mentioned, there are a substantial number of sites which we hope to acquire through Project Home Key that are spread throughout the San Gabriel Valley.
Right, thank you. And again, the mayor mentioned to, if we could focus on the city of Baldwin Park, however, I understand, you know, a homeless person regardless of where they're from and it'll be our surrounding cities, they need somewhere to stay. And when they're homeless, they eventually end up being our homeless person because they do go from one city to another. So when, one day they can be in Irwindale, the next in West Covina, and then they'll be in Baldwin Park. So it's when they are homeless, it's really hard to tell what city they're from because they're moving so much. They're just moving forward. They can accommodate themselves better at the, that time. So I, I'm looking forward to this program. And I just want to make sure that the services that are being provided there are specific to the residents that move there and that they have the full support, the wraparound services that they need so they can move ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, let me, I want to continue one, for one, I am disappointed that it's not primarily concentrated in Baldwin Park. I know right now, 15 families about to lose their home are potentially could be homeless. Now, the unfortunate part, the tendency here is that a few communities like West Covina, Covina, Duarte, and those, they may not choose to go on the same route like we do. So that means it would probably be the hub for those things. And that's very disappointing. Covina, I believe, three weeks ago or something like that, there was an issue on the news where they were not going to allow specific individuals. And I can't, I can't recall what exactly it was. But it's disappointing. It really is because Baldwin Park cannot be used as a hub for others. I mean, we have the people here. I want to see the ones that we have here in Baldwin Park right now housed in that, in that particular hotel. We could fill it up and more. And of course, I support the project. But I don't, I don't, I, I, I don't like the actual, the, how it, how it will be managed based upon the subregions and so on and so forth. And West Covina rejected it. I mean, what was their reason behind that? Covina, I mean, again, it's always the less affluent communities that take the vast amount of grunt. And that's unfortunate for something that I believe is a good cause for this community. But secondly, I want to know, what, how, how does the city protect themselves? If, say you child molester or something like that, specific felons that potentially may be geared in that area. How, how, how is that, how is that brought in? I mean, how is that being monitored and secured for, for the residents of Baldwin Park? I'm kind of curious. I mean, what, how, what type of families are we talking about? I mean, or, or is it just targeted for families or? Can someone explain that to me? Just want to make sure that, that, that we're not, that we're not bringing an element that, that is not conducive to this community. And I know that's the reason why West Covina made their, made their decision of rejecting or being part of, of this, of this, of this particular project that's been. Can someone please answer that?
Yes, certainly. I'm happy to address both your questions. On the question of geographic targeting, I do want to say that it cuts both ways. That people will be housed at the site in Baldwin Park, who are not exclusively from Baldwin Park. But people from Baldwin Park may be housed in Almonte or in La Puente. So what I think you can expect is that Baldwin Park will get a fair share of the beds that are created through Project Home Key in SPA Three relative to your your homeless population in comparison to, to other surrounding cities. So I think if you look at it more in the aggregate, that I think you can expect to sort of receive sort of that level of benefit from Project Home Key. On your other point, what we find, there, there's no question that there are people experiencing homelessness who have had experience with a criminal justice system. There are people who have had felonies. There are people who have been in prison. But what we find is that being housed in permanent housing is the best way to assist people who have criminal history to avoid future encounters with the criminal justice system compared to the challenges of being, living in a wash or on the sidewalk with all of the stressors and challenges that that, that entails.
So you said they're going to have wraparound services, full wraparound services for them there? Mental health, medical, and all of that assistance?
Absolutely. That's the way permanent supportive housing works, that we have onsite 24-hour services.
Okay. And how long, what do you anticipate each family or person will be staying? Okay, and how long, what do you anticipate each family or person will be staying there?
Once it becomes permanent housing, people could stay as long as they, as long as they meet the eligibility criteria and they want to remain there.
But meantime, it's a project room key that is not the permanent housing. How long will they be there until they're better or?
Okay, so, so just to be clear, when, when, if. So let's talk about the Baldwin Park site, Motel Six. It's currently functioning as a room key site. When we, when the county purchases it, there will be a period of time, as I mentioned, until some. Judy is. I stand.
Sorry, Phil. It's not actually a project room key site currently.
Beg your pardon, beg your pardon. I was uh, I was perhaps misreading uh, my, my, oh, yes, beg your pardon. I, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I had misread the subtitle on the chart. Thank you for the correction. So the, the motel six in Baldwin Park is not currently. Thank you for the correction. Um, if the county succeeds in uh, securing state funding to acquire the site. Then it will function initially as interim housing. Whether it's technically a project room key site or not, um, will depend. Essentially on whether federal funding is available through FEMA to continue offsetting uh, the service cost at the site. But whether it's technically project room key or not. It will be an interim housing site likely until sometime in fiscal year. Twenty-one, twenty-two, at which point we envision that their rehab would occur. Um, as I mentioned, to convert the site into permanent housing.
Okay, thank you.
Let me, let me ask.
Mayor, can I, can I, can I uh, ask some questions here? Um, and I think Paul. Paul would probably like to ask some questions. Councilmember Hernandez. And then, thank you. And then, of course, we'll, we'll go around, right?
Yeah, just, yeah, just make sure, go ahead. I didn't know.
Yes, thank you, thank you. So uh, Phil and Kelly, this is Monica Garcia, council member. And uh, this is an item that obviously was rushed onto the agenda and I did review. Uh, the, the briefing that staff sent to us. But I'm still trying to understand what is the ask of us or is this for information purposes only?
Um, this is actually for informational purposes.
Okay.
Under the state law, um. There's not a formal role. Under the state law that was enacted as part of the um. The new state budget that created project home key. The sort of normal city role around land use approval. Um, that is not applicable to project home key.
Yeah, and council member, I, I'd like to add, again, this is Judy Vasquez with Supervisor Solis's office. The supervisor was just very interested in providing as much information as possible to Baldwin Park. As a partner, as, as somewhat, as a city that has been working closely with the county on homelessness-related efforts. And so we wanted to share with you and provide an opportunity for you to provide feedback and ask questions. Uh, but you know, the supervisor is very interested in moving forward with this project alongside, uh, and hopefully with the support. Of, of Baldwin Park.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so. So, okay, that's, that's a good starting point. Um, I think that. You know, what you'll find from the council is that we have, well, we have encouraged the collaboration with. Almani, South Almani. We have, uh, you know, had our staff be very active. In trying to find solutions um, for our city, for this region, working with the Cog. And I think in concept, you know, yes, we do want to see, or I, let me speak for myself. I want to see projects that do house the homeless population. Specifically, if it's in Baldwin Park, it would be nice to have those uh, that are housed be. From Baldwin Park because we do, as you know, uh, based on the, on the count from Lhasa. We have a growing population. And. We are trying to work collaboratively with, you know, regional um, government bodies. To identify solutions. And um, so we recognize, you know, we have the wash along that, that divides us and, and Almani. And so there is that shared population in many ways. Um, but that said, we do have, within Baldwin Park, we do have a growing homeless population. And so. I think, you know, the, the, the concerns that the mayor expressed are very valid, you know, in a, in a collaborative uh, way. And I wonder if we can identify a certain percentage. Of, of individuals that could be from Baldwin Park or, you know, even from this, this region. Again, we are working with South Almani and Almani very closely. And um. So just being a little bit more focused, like micro-focused to this region, if we are going to. Look at a, a prime commercial property for the city. And consider that for an affordable, uh, uh, homeless project. You know, we would like to, in a collaborative spirit, um, have that have a very direct benefit. In our city. And I think that you can understand um, why we would want that. The other thing that I wanted to, to um, contribute to the conversation is we do have additional. Um, motels that run along the ten freeway. And it just seems to me, if there is an opportunity, I know that there's a time constraint. But if there is an opportunity. For us to engage in any conversations, it sounds like there could be a little, um. There could be a greater opportunity um, in another area of our city and you, you may or may not be aware of it. But there's, I, I want to say at least two, maybe three hotels along um. The stretch that's, that's off the ten freeway between, I want to say like Foster and the six oh five freeway. And uh, I don't know if that could provide a little, you know, a little. Area um, to consider for, for the home key. Projects, but also, you know, kind of part of the larger plan. Um, I don't know how many units each of those hotels or motels have, but um. Again, I don't know what the time constraints are, but. They seem like they would be a good opportunity and also viable. To me, it seems like it would be very viable economically because motel six, they do well. They um, I don't know how inclined they are to sell their property. You would know because you, you, you have been part of those conversations. There are some motels that seem like they would be good candidates, um, that I just kind of looking, you know, scanning the community. And it seems like they could be viable because they're not as prominently placed. Um, you know, next to the ten freeway. Uh, they probably don't. Bring in the revenues that motel six does and they probably would be more open. I don't know. But I, I just share that for um, some options. And again, to go back to the viability. Uh, I think, I look at motel six and I can see why. Uh, the supervisor and the governor would like that property because it is a prime property. It's a prime commercial, a regional commercial property. And I, I don't know that motel six would really um, move forward. You know, given that they are sitting on a prime commercial property and they probably bring in some good revenues. Do you know anything about those conversations?
Yes, I, I do. Um, that, we do have a. You do have a commitment from the Motel Six Corporation to sell um, the Baldwin Park site. And in fact. The Motel Six Corporation uh, is generally willing to sell any of the corporate owned. As opposed to franchised. At corporate level.
Okay.
Um, for this purpose.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, we're going forward on, on, on that basis. Uh, with respect to the other sites you've mentioned, as Kelly referenced, we have a full list at this point. For our initial round of applications, which we have to submit by August thirteenth. Depending on how that all comes together, it's not inconceivable that we could pursue. An additional round of applications thereafter, though we've not made a decision to do that. If you wanted to provide us with um, or perhaps to the supervisor's office, the sort of the names of the sites you have in mind. Um, we could certainly take that into consideration, but I want to be clear. That it's not a given that we would pursue any, any additional sites and um. Beyond what's on our current target list.
Right, now I hear you. Okay, so my next question is, um, I did see that. Okay, the state is allocating the funding to the county. And then the county through your office, Phil, I guess Kelly as well, right? You're part of the same office. Um, you are working to, I guess, secure these um, properties with a developer. Will your office also administer the program moving forward, including like the wraparound or what is the model around that?
Certainly. So there's, there's, that's to think about this in three phases. During the interim housing period, that's before rehab. Um. The county would either um. Through the, most likely through the Department of Health Services, would either through the, county would contract with a homeless service provider. To operate the site, either through the Department of Health Services or through the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority. Uh, then we would secure a developer to undertake the re, the renovations. And then after that, we would have a homeless provider who would operate the site. Pursuing to a contract with the Department of Health Services.
In the long term.
In the long. And that's the way we do it now for uh, all, all the permanent supportive housing. Where the county provides the services. Um, we have the, the Department of Health Services has a contract with um, an established homeless services.
Mm-hmm, okay. Okay, and then as far as identifying the occupants, I know you gave an explanation and I'm sorry, um. It just, it's, it, can you repeat that for me? How you identify the occupants?
Sure. So for, so for interim housing, um, this in the, in the initial period would be. Trying to focus on people who are COVID vulnerable. Um, because it looks like the pandemic is going to be still very much with it. As of January, absent something miraculous happening. Um, so we would be targeting people over sixty-five or who have health conditions. That make them particularly vulnerable should they contract COVID. Um, then as we convert this site to permanent housing, to the extent it's permanent supportive housing. As I mentioned, we would be looking to um, offer the permanent supportive housing. To the, to people who are, have the most acute needs. And for the intensive level of support that uh, permanent supportive housing offers. Again, certainly within service planning area three and then uh, more focused even within Spa three. Um, in your Baldwin Park and the surrounding communities. That said, we certainly would never um, displace someone who was using the site. As a shelter before rehab, back onto the street. So that would all be part of the planning process. And some of the people who are in the site as interim housing may very well qualify for permanent supportive housing. And could choose to become tenants and live at the site on an ongoing basis, if that was their preference.
Mm-hmm, okay. Is there any, is there any way that we can work with the supervisor's office with the LA County? With your office to look at the existing population in Baldwin Park? Is, does that go against any laws?
Well, they're certainly eligible, to the extent they're otherwise eligible people in Baldwin Park. Would be within the geography for the site. I mean, I think on your question of a set aside. I guess I just want to encourage you to think about the flip side of this, that there are, will be. Multiple other sites in the San Gabriel Valley where Baldwin Park residents could also go. So, and there's about thirty cities in the San Gabriel Valley and there, um. There's too many cities for there to be um, homeless facilities, whether they're interim housing or supportive housing in all of them. So we have to take a regional, right? Um, that said, I think we can definitely collaborate with the city. To identify people who are homeless in your city that you think would be a good fit. Whether for interim housing where there are not the eligibility criteria. Are much, broader or for permanent uh, supportive housing um, after rehab.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I would certainly appreciate that. Um. Again, because we are, we, we do have a growing population if you look at our Lhasa numbers. And. Yeah, I think that would be um, a win-win because. If you look at it from the city's standpoint, you know, we do want to be part of the solution. Uh, we are making efforts, we are contributing um, to a regional, you know, solution. Uh, but we lose a prime real, you know, regional commercial site and um. You know, a little bit, I don't need, I, I don't know, does the T O T apply there? So as a win-win, I think it would be, you know, uh, in the spirit of collaboration to, to do something like. Like that. And I get what you're saying. And I, I don't want to, um, you know, see, I don't want to create an impediment to. That regional solution. I just think, okay, this site is gonna, it's gonna be in Baldwin Park. And so it would be, it would be a win-win if we could house. You know, uh, homeless that are in our city currently and work with you to identify those. So I, I would certainly appreciate that.
I think that I'll, I'll say I really appreciate your comments and as we worked with. Uh, Supervisor Solis's office and the other two supervisors that represent portions of the San Gabriel Valley. Um, we've been very sort of cognizant about this dynamic of the need, particularly with so many small cities. To have a regional approach and at the same time, the very understandable interest among cities that may. Host uh, homeless service sites um, to um, serve their homeless residents. Um, what I'd like to say in this situation is that we really have an advantage. In that we'll have multiple sites coming online on basically the same timeline in the San Gabriel Valley. Similar to what's happened in project room key, where we had quite a large number of sites in San Gabriel Valley. Come on within a very short period of time, which enabled the sites to kind of focus. In their more immediate uh, vicinity. So what I can commit to is that we will um. Take an equitable approach to um. The utilization of this resource, which we, multiple sites in the San Gabriel Valley. Assuming that we secure state funding for multiple acquisitions in San Gabriel Valley. And I'm very optimistic that that will be the case. Um, and then I think there is a middle path here. There is a path that is, so there's kind of a continuum. One end of the continuum is a. Strictly spa-wide approach without regard to any level of subspa geography. That's kind of one end of the continuum. Another end of the continuum is reserving beds only for the city where the site is um, housed. We're gonna be somewhere in between those two points of the continuum. And I know that Supervisor Solis and her colleagues that represent the San Gabriel Valley. Are very sensitive to the interest in San Gabriel Valley and we'll all work together, uh, including with the San Gabriel Valley Cog. Um, and the San Gabriel Valley Consortium to come up with an approach here that um. Addresses the, kind of the rage of needs and interests. And fortunately, we'll have a good amount of time to do that. Because again, this issue of this sort of, who gets to live in the sites is principally an issue. Once we're in the permanent housing phase and that is um, probably about uh, close to two years from now.
Okay. And then my last question is, um, you mentioned some other sites that might be coming online. Do you, do you have an idea where those are sited currently in, in this region, in Spa three?
Well, I just want to be respectful of the dynamic with the other cities. Um, and I, I just don't. And I, I just don't know exactly what the level of communication has been, but I can tell you that there are. There are other sites. I can tell you the number of sites in Spa Three. In our, on our current target list, there are one, two, three, four. Four, five. Looks like there are five Spa Three sites. So that's, that's quite a good number, that's sort of, that's a disproportionate number relative to the distribution of the homeless population.
Phil, and can we also uh, share a little bit about how we don't expect to be able to actually acquire for every single property that we put forward to the state?
Yeah, certainly, we, we don't have a guaranteed allotment, so we will be, we don't want to sell ourselves short, so we will apply for. Sort of the most that we can put together with willing owner, given the timeframe and yeah, it's very. We would be surprised if, if all of our applications were approved, just based on the amount of money that we'll be seeking.
Okay, well, thank you for those um, answers and there, uh, I'll give the floor back to you.
Okay, uh, anyone else, Mike, did you want to say?
Yes, thank you very much, thank you very much Phil and Kelly, um, I don't know if you want to take a sip of water there Phil, because you've been speaking for quite some time. But again, uh, thank you for everything that you guys are doing, um, you know, I'm very much interested in the, in the program in which you guys are facing. You know, similar to the questions that some of my council members have, have mentioned. You know, historically, as you know, uh, you know, communities of brown have always been uh, essentially, uh, you know, given the raw end of the deal. Um, and I certainly want to make sure that that is not happening in our own city and I know that's something that's very. Uh, sensitive to, to our supervisor and I know that's not her intent, uh, but I just want to make sure and we're really clear about. That's not happening in us, for us or within our city. You know, we have other local cities, as you know, the mayor mentioned, Covina, uh, it sounded, um, I don't know, but it sounded as. Uh, they were not in favor of this, um, but as you were talking about equity, uh, Phil, you mentioned that, uh, you know, you will continue to look at that. As a commitment to all of us and I hope that, you know, you will be able to move forward, whether, you know, sometimes they have wanted or not, right? Because at the end of the day, uh, these type of programs are what's going to uplift our entire region and our community. So with that said, um, I just want to get a little bit more information in regards to the type of, uh, you know, service and um. And not so much expectation, I really want a commitment um, in and around the type of service providers. That will deal with any type of community issues that come along uh, in and around um, this facility, whether it's in, is, whether it's motel six. Or another one off the six, off the uh, off the ten freeway, but primarily we're talking about motel six area. Cause again, people are gonna be, you know, out in the streets, you know, we're not expecting them to be in their rooms all, you know, twenty-four hours and so forth. You know, across the streets, you know, we have a Home Depot, we have a Walmart and so forth. My thing is, one of my concerns is, I do not want our police department to be dealing, you know, to be responding to these type of, you know, complaints. Or any type of issues, uh, because that's not what the police department's role is, right? Especially if we're talking about, you know, restructuring, uh, you know, policing, right? Cause you know, they're essentially, you know, our social workers by default, right? So will the service providers have twenty-four hour operators that, and staff that will be able to go out and respond to these calls? That perhaps, you know, the city's nine-one-one, uh, you know, dispatch calls that they can call over there and have those be resolved at that level?
Yes, we can absolutely commit to having twenty-four hour onsite uh, provider staff. Both during the interim housing period and post rehab, uh, once the site is permanent supportive housing.
Perfect, and that's, and that's in regards to, like I said. If there's an issue, if there's somebody going on or something's happening, you know, a couple of blocks away, you know, I'm not talking about everywhere in the city, but at least right now, a couple of blocks away. You know, near or in and around the neighborhood, they'll be able to respond to that, you know, in a twenty-four hour periods?
Well, certainly they address, they're responsible for any issues that happen on the site.
I understand.
So that is their focus, I mean, if there's something that, anything that requires. Sort of law enforcement involvement that is appropriate or uh, paramedics, that's an appropriate nine-one-one response, but I can tell you. That um, our experience, I mean, we have many, many thousands of people in the county in both interim housing and in permanent supportive housing. And um, sort of consistently, the. The effect of interim housing, permanent supportive housing is to reduce the demand on um. Nine-one-one services. For obvious reasons, because people who are not living on the sidewalk are less likely to have issues that require a nine-one-one response. And then particularly once the site is permanent supportive housing, it will be like an apartment building. Uh, it really will be an apartment building, the only difference is that it will be a converted motel, so it'll look different than a lot of, than most apartment buildings do, but. That's, that's what you're gonna find.
Perfect, um, I appreciate that and, you know, given that, you know, there may be, you know, if, if the site is acquired. Uh, you know, we'll essentially have space there for, you know, permanent and interim housing. Can we, you know, ensure that we can have a LACSA team, uh, you know, base out of there or have space available for them so they can deal with. Uh, you know, issues in and around not only Baldwin Park, but the rest of the region. As we move forward, you know, something to think about, uh, because again, if you have space, that's something that's, you know, if we could have. You know, for us to be able to contact or the community or whatever the case may be, it's just easier if we have folks that are based in the community, working in the community, if you know what I mean.
And when you say LACSA team, are you referring to outreach?
Their outreach team, absolutely.
I see. So um, so the service, the contracted service provider, once it's permanent supportive housing will be a contractor of. The Department of Health Services like Volunteers of America or Union Station Homeless Services, for example. Which are the two largest homeless service providers in the San Gabriel Valley. Our outreach teams are, um, they're both outreach staff with LACSA, but we also have multi-disciplinary teams. Funded through Measure H, which are contractors of the Department of Health Services. And they also function on a spa-wide basis and a sub-spat basis, so. My guess is that we would not want to sacrifice a unit that could be used for housing. At the motel six for, to house outreach staff. But to the extent that there is others' office-type space, that's a possibility, that's not something. Uh, that I could commit to, but again, I want to be clear that our outreach resources function on a spa basis and a sub-spat basis. Not on an individual city basis.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go on.
To, to your question, council member, uh, we actually do have. Uh, LACSA ER, uh, LACSA outreach teams that are co-located at our South Almani office or our regional field office. So again, like Phil said, if there's office space available, actually the LACSA E R team. Having that kind of space available, so they don't have to traverse uh, the San Gabriel Valley. Uh, which we know can take uh, sometimes hours in, in the right or the wrong traffic, but. Uh, that is a possibility and we'd be happy to work with the city if that's something that it's interested in.
At least for myself and, you know, like I said, we could have that, you know, as Councilmember Garcia talked about is, you know, that ongoing dialogue as we, you know, really flush out. You know, the details, you know, if we get this approved, obviously, right? So I, I do appreciate that, um, the one other thing, Phil, you know, you know, we did mention about uh, the sex offenders and I think that was something that the mayor asked. You know, I think, you know, for us and something of a concern for me would be to, you know, ensure that. At least for our community, right, is that we don't have any, uh, you know, sex offenders that are tier three or two. You know, tier three is, you know, our, you know, life, life uh, registered uh, sex offenders and, because again. These are, you know, these are, these are concerns not only on myself, but also concerns that, you know, I hear from the community and residents. And so that's just, you know, something that, you know, if we can continue to have that ongoing dialogue around that issue, I would certainly appreciate it. And then the.
So they, so can I?
Yes, please.
Speak to that. So, anyone who's a registered sex offender in California that is subject to any restrictions on where they can live. Such as proximity to a school or a childcare center or a park. Those are applicable, there's no exception to that for permanent supportive housing or for interim housing. So those restrictions apply and I don't know specifically what the um, proximity is of this particular site. To any of those protected locations. To the extent that someone is a registered sex offender, however, and the site, they're not precluded. By virtue of the terms of their registration from the site, then they would not be excluded from this site. And again, I want to kind of reiterate the point I made before, that a person who experiencing homelessness, who has a criminal justice background. Including people who are registered sex offenders are much more likely to not engage in future criminal behavior. If they are living, if they have housing than if they are living on the street. If we as a system excluded from housing as a homeless services system. Excluded people who are registered sex offenders, then what we would do is we would ensure that there would be. Even larger numbers of people who are registered sex offenders, living in the communities, in, in our communities, unsheltered. So we don't want that, so we definitely are committed to the sort of ensuring that any services we provide. Address the needs of the um, both the resident, that people experiencing homelessness. And the communities where they live, whether it's an interim or permanent housing, but the sort of kind of categorical exclusion you're talking about, that would. Uh, is not something that we could incorporate in our system. With the caveat, however, of course, that any otherwise applicable restrictions under state law continue to be applicable to homeless services sites.
Thank you for that, uh, but I just want to, I just be, I just want to be really clear about this. You know, whether it's the interim or the permanent housing, not only will I, but I guarantee you several other community members will go onto the database. And they will look to see if how many people are, are, are housed, uh, housed in that location. And if there is a vast majority of folks that are registered sex offenders, uh, you're, we're gonna have community issues and we're gonna have problems, so just.
I think I've just said, I just want to be fair about it, okay? I don't, there's certainly no intention of seeking a concentration of residents who would be registered sex offenders.
I'm, if, look, I've worked in government over twenty-plus years. I know what we say and I know what actually happens sometimes in the past, not to say that that's gonna happen here, but I just want to be very clear about that.
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you, moving on to the next one, uh, and really like my last question is, uh, you know, Councilmember. Avila and I think even, you know, Monica, uh, excuse me, Garcia and even the mayor have touched base on this. You know, we here in Baldwin Park, we use, you know, obviously the hotels for emergency, uh, you know, hotel vouchers and programs of that nature. You know, if there's a way of having, you know, if we could have some sort of expectation. Where we could set aside, a true set aside for these, you know, uh, emergency. You know, uh, relocation, um, for, for individuals, whether it's domestic violence or whatever the case may be, um, that would certainly help us. Cause right now, you know, we put some of those folks up in, say, in another hotel, but there's no services there for them, right? So the reason I, I'm, I'm very adamant of trying to work towards a set aside, uh, and it doesn't have to be a very large one, we can actually work with the city and staff to. See, to understand, you know, what is that actually, those, the peaks and valleys of that. But again, if there's somebody that's trying to seek a shelter or someone that's, that we're trying, the police department or our domestic violence program or. Or another nonprofit organizations that we have here, or the church is trying to, you know, move somebody into a, you know, short-term living situation. Very short-term, right, it's not to take away and to have them there, stay there permanently. But putting them in a, in a, in a, an environment that fosters, you know, care and love. Um, and services, uh, such as, you know, what your service providers do on a daily basis, um, I think makes sense. And it's something that I can certainly sell to the community and the residents, you know, a block away going, look. This is not only helping the, you know, folks that are, you know, during the COVID and so forth, but also the permanent, but also when we have these. You know, encounters uh, with folks out in the community, we, we at least know that we can do that, and it's not just for us too, right? It's, you know, like, like you said, it's our s- uh, sub-region of, you know, Elmani, South Almani, you know, those folks too. Having that set aside for those three folks, I mean, for those five communities that you mentioned. I assure you will be used um, constantly and would be very helpful, um, because then again. We, all three of us, but mostly our, our community, excuse me, the five cities and plus our community will understand that there is, this is a place of. Of, you know, of safety and of nurture, um, and that will go a long way for us, so if that could, you know, you can continue to put that on your. On your, uh, you know, expectations leaning more towards commitment area. We would appreciate it as we move forward with this discussion, of course.
Sure, so let me say that um, in. I think we have a, a model in Pomona that might be of interest to you where the. Beds that we, that the county funds. Are not restricted um, geographically to the city where the site is located. But in Pomona at their big interim housing site, they fund themselves. The operations of a certain number of beds and I believe those beds are only for placement by their police department. Might be police, or police and fire perhaps, um, or maybe just the police department. And Letitia Colchado from our team, whom some of you may know is listening in and um, she's our, uh. We have a liaison from our team for E, all eighty-eight cities in the county and Letitia is the liaison for Baldwin Park. And a, uh, San Gabriel Valley resident herself. And she noted that through the Measure H funding that the city of Baldwin Park has received. From the county, which is through June of uh, twenty-twenty-one, that a portion of your funding. Is for motel stays, so I, I think that if the, during the interim housing period. Once the county acquires a site, if the city wanted to essentially um, sort of fund the service costs. For some number of beds, that we could definitely work together around earmarking those number of beds. That would be more on the kind of a shorter-term basis like you were saying. Once the site is rehabbed and converted to permanent housing, I don't really see that as a continued viable option. But again, that would be sometime into twenty-twenty-two, in all likelihood.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and I'll give it back to you, Mr. Baron, thank you, Judy.
Mayor, can I have one more comment, please? Thank you, uh, first of all, Phil and Kelly, thank you for all the wonderful information, um. I, I feel that we have too many homeless and like you said, the homeless population is increasing. But I also want to uh, remind everybody, um, that. All the homeless are, they come from di- different walks of life and I've met a lot of them, a lot of them hold regular jobs like we do. Unfortunately, they have no place to live. They, uh, we're stigmatizing them by saying that they may be criminals, they may be rapists, but in reality. They're regular people like us that either lost their home because lost of a job because of illness, now maybe because of COVID. They have families and I've met these people, I, I've met them under the, the, the bridge. I've talked to them, I've been to Mars Place in Pasadena, it's a beautiful place where they, where they live now, they were homeless at one point. And Mars Place has given them the opportunity to get back on their feet, to, to go to school, to get a job. And take, and take pride in having a home now, but I just want to say that. It, it hurts me to, to, to hear that, you know, the rapists or homeless, they're criminals, maybe some of them, yes. But we need to try to stay away from stigmatizing the homeless because they're not all like that, they just need help, they need to. They just need help. They need to help guidance on how to get back on their feet. Um, and so as a community, I feel that, that we, we need to be there for them. I know Wes Covina rejected the project, but they don't have the heart that Baldwin Park has. And we definitely want to make a difference uh to the, the homeless community and if possible, avoid other families from being homeless. And I hear what the mayor is saying that if we could get more of our families in these places, it would be wonderful because we know of families, the mayor knows of families, I work for the school district, Ms. Jean works for the school district, of people that have gone homeless under our watch and there has been nowhere for us to place them. There was this lady, Victoria, that, thank you to Father Mike. They found a place for her all the way in Long Beach and she still commutes to Baldwin Park to attend church. But I, I hear you, Mayor. I wish we could get all the Baldwin Park residents, but if we can make a difference in more homeless and let's just remember, there, there are people like us down on their luck. They're not all drug addicts or criminals. So, so I look forward to hopefully uh starting something and that we can continue and help people get their lives back on track. Thank you, Phil and Kelly.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else have any other input? Okay, I just, I just want to end uh by saying again, I think this uh an opportunity uh to address the homeless now. If it was up to me, um, I would put all of Baldwin Park homeless that we have. There's supposedly five hundred that were, that uh were calculated by the county, even though I differ and some of us differ with that actual number, which I think it's a lot less. Um, I would put them all in there. Uh, ballpark first, uh, just like West Covina first, uh, and all our neighboring cities. And I'm just kind of curious what the uh, what the more affluent communities will do uh in, in, in their immediate vicinity, because Baldwin Park again has always been on the forefront when it comes to addressing the needs of our community. There's a lot of homeless families in ballpark and I wish it was focused on Baldwin Park residents or in dire need, but that's, this is the way uh, uh, the, the county uh is going to be managing and I understand, uh, it's a regional. So I want to thank each and every one of you. Please thank the supervisor Judy for taking this opportunity. She's always been on the forefront in addressing the needs uh of the county, uh, and we understand. So I want to thank uh everyone that participated here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate the opportunity and it's, this is great to, great to see uh um, the elected leadership um of the city that has this sort of um sort of perspective and heart and compassion um that you do and um as I mentioned before, I feel like Project Rimkey has been a really significant opportunity to increase homeless services in San Gabriel Valley. We're going to build on that with Project Rimkey. And uh, I'm sure that Baldwin Park will be um a very significant contributor to the ongoing strengthening of the homeless service delivery system uh throughout the San Gabriel Valley.
Mayor. Thank you. Yeah, I just want to provide some um, some closing remarks for our conversation and again, um, well, thank Phil and Kelly for the presentation as well as Judy uh for bringing this information to us. And please thank the supervisor for uh, you know, this, this briefing. Uh, I do want to express that the city of Baldwin Park, we want to work collaboratively uh with the supervisor um on this and, and other projects. And we, we have had that wonderful relationship for many years. And so I do want to express that homelessness is an important issue in our community. Affordable housing is an important issue and I think that we've tried to be very progressive. Uh, we've tried to be part of the solution. And that is represented and reflected in our collaboration with the, the South Almani and Almani and even with the Cog. Um, and so this would be just one more step in that direction. I do want to share that there is sensitivity that you're, you're speaking to a community that has, has dealt with social justice, environmental justice issues, and the supervisor is well aware of it. Um, so if we raise any concerns about, you know, um, the occupancy, it's, it's only because, and I think you could understand this, Phil, um, this is just, this is part of the process, right? We all want to develop healthy, um, sustainable communities that uh, you know, can become self-sufficient. And in this case, we're talking about a homeless population. Um, so we, I think we, we do desire that. I think we also want to be careful about the impacts, you know, in our community and we want to work, uh, like I said, collaboratively, like we always have with the supervisor, with your office, Phil, with you, Kelly. And um really, you know, put our heads together and, and really come up with a project that would be, that's going to even be greater than if it was just the state and county doing it alone. Um, I think that, you know, that would be the win-win for our city and also keep in mind that, you know, we will lose TOT from this, as I mentioned earlier, probably to the tune of about thirty thousand a year. Um, and we will lose a prime regional commercial property. But I do want to express that we do want to be part of the solution and, and I just hope that at the end of the day, like council member Hernandez alluded to, that it is a real win-win, you know, a gem, um, not only for the regional solution, but also for our community. And that's all.
All right. Thank you. Once again, thank you very much. Appreciate that. All righty. Okay.
Uh, Mayor, um, thank you. If there's nothing else on that item, um, we're going to ask to hold over the affordable housing presentation. It was uh informational only. Um, Benjamin Martinez has sent everybody information on that. Um, he can contact you at another time if there's questions, but we're running low on time, so we wanted to move into closed session. If that's okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, council member.
Just really quickly, just again, to show our commitment, um, do we want to uh just draft a a quick letter of, you know, of support uh for this, um, so that could also go along with uh the program as, or application that they're doing?
I think so. I think that, that would be, it would make, yes.
So uh, uh, we could ask Shannon or Ben or whoever's in the lead on that to just kind of do that unless there's any uh objections from the council members. I think they could just move forward with it tomorrow.
Sounds good. Yes, let's do that. I think that would definitely would uh, uh, definitely be a good idea. All right. So at this point, we're going to go into closed session. So are we signing out here? Is that what we're doing? Are we staying on?
Uh, yes, we will need to sign off and um sign back in on the closed session uh meeting.
Good night, everyone. We look forward to getting your letter of support.
Thank you, Judy. Appreciate that.
Thank you.